My text, I'll be here. I just want to mean it. Nah, he'll be here.
Call this New Kent County Board of Supervisors meeting May eighth, twenty twenty-three to order. I would ask Ms. Bartlett if she would lead us in an invocation, please?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord God, for the opportunity to gather here tonight, Lord God. Father God, we ask that you just open our hearts and our minds to receive what's on the agenda, Lord. Father God, just be with each and every one of us. And Father God, we just ask that you pour out a special blessing upon all of those who have taken their time to attend this meeting tonight. Father God, keep New Kent County, keep your hand on New Kent County, and we give you all the praise, glory, and honor in the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Bartlett. Ms. Watkins, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Thank you all for being here tonight, and if you're at home watching, thank you for sitting at home and watching. First on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to take a look. If anybody would like to make a motion, that would be wonderful.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Page.
I ruled that we accept the consent agenda as presented to be recorded to the record.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, would you call the, poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Next on the agenda, we have one special presentation recognizing May twenty twenty-three as Older Americans' Month in New Kent County. Senior Connections Executive Director Amy Strike, Senior Connections Director Communications and Outreach, Christopher Lighton, and District Three Supervisor Patricia Page.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right.
So proclamation reads as proclamation, May twenty twenty-three, Ola Americans' Month, whereas New Kent County includes growing number of Ola Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcome, included, and supported. And whereas New Kent County recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and supports the need of Ola Americans to thrive and live independently as long as possible. And whereas New Kent can work to build an even better community for our Ola residents by planning programs that encourage independence, by ensuring activities are responsible to individual needs and preferences, and by increasing access to services that support aging in place. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that on this tenth day of April twenty twenty-three, the New Kent County Board of Supervisor does proclaim this month of May as Ola Americans' Month, and urges every resident to recognize the contributions for our older citizens to help to create an exclusive society, enjoying efforts to support Ola Americans' choices about how they age in their communities. This attests by Rodney Hathaway, Clerk of the Board, C. Thomas Tiller, Jr., the Board Chair. I present. Thank you. If you want to say a few words?
I would, thank you.
A few words.
Okay, got it. Katie, you want to come up with me? Good evening. Hello, and thank you so much. My name is Amy Stride, and this is Katie Johnson. We are both here from Senior Connections, the Capital Area Agency on Aging. And on behalf of the agency, I would like to say that we are truly thankful for your decision to proclaim May as Older Americans' Month within New Kent County. Your recognition highlights the invaluable contributions older adults have made to New Kent and emphasizes their significance in our community. Roughly one in five residents of New Kent is over the age of sixty-five, and this percentage will continue to grow as the older population has become the fastest-growing demographic in New Kent County. Over the past decade, the share of residents over sixty-five has more than doubled in the county. Those aged fifty to sixty-four are also the second-largest demographic, which further accentuates the future growth of the older adult population in New Kent. With this proclamation, you are helping to foster a culture of inclusion and respect for all residents in New Kent and recognize the value of everyone in the county regardless of age. Throughout May, we look forward to celebrating the achievements of our older residents, highlighting their needs, and raising awareness about issues important to them. Your unwavering support and dedication to their well-being is truly appreciated. So thank you. Thank you for your commitment to cherishing all of our residents and your dedication to making New Kent a great place to live and grow old. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, I'm Katie Johnson, a longtime resident, a proud graduate of the George W. Watkins High School, and I've been working with Senior Connections seven years now, I believe, and proud to be there and proud to be a citizen of this county. And as Amy can attest, when things happen with Senior Connections, I always ask, what's going on in New Kent? Because I want to make sure that New Kent gets its fair share and that, you know, you'll recognize and that the citizens here get the services they need to the greatest extent possible. So thank you so much, and I'm around, Katie Johnson, just look me up in the telephone book. If you want something, just give me a call. I'll be glad to try to work with you, and Senior Connections also glad to work with you in meeting the needs of the elderly and older citizens and caregivers in this community. Thank you.
I'm sorry to hear that I'm no longer in that fastest-growing category. So next on our agenda is the Citizens Comment Period. And I'll remind you, if you're here tonight to speak at a public hearing, there will be a time for that a little bit later on in the agenda. First, on the signup sheet is Angela M. Bartlett. Would you please come and state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Angela Bartlett. I am the pastor of New Covenant Community Church in Quentin, Virginia. So good evening. This will be brief. I just stopped by to tell you from New Covenant Community Church, on behalf of New Covenant, the Baptist Ministers Union, and the New Kent Clergy Association, we wish to give a heartfelt thanks and utmost appreciation to Rodney Hathaway, the New Kent Board of Supervisors, the New Kent Sheriff's Office, and all of those in the county who were instrumental in making the National Day of Prayer a huge success and community gathering. We look forward to working with you and supporting you in the future, and please do not hesitate to reach out to New Covenant or any of the faith community for assistance, prayer, or any pastoral needs you may have. Again, I say thank you for your support of our faith community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bartlett. Next on the list is Daniel Stewart.
Good evening. Daniel Stewart, eighty-one thirty on Airport Road. I just want to plead to you guys as board supervisors, please stop approving all these housing developments. We have a lot that's been approved, that are in the works, haven't been completed, but being built. And I live on Airport Road, and that road is ridiculous with traffic going to the dump and just general traffic. And that road is not made for anymore, and I know there's a lot of other roads that aren't made for all this traffic. They're not wide enough. People on that road get their mailboxes along with other roads taken out, and we have to pay for them. And our school, we just got a new elementary. We're going to be needing another one. You got three elementaries going into one middle school. The growth, and you figure per house, at least two vehicles per house, if not more. Additional people, houses, or traffic. We need more businesses, not houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Next, Eric Fears.
Yes, sir. Can I start off by making sure you get one of these packets so I can explain my situation? My name is Eric Fears. I live at eleven oh four Dyson Point, Lenexa, Virginia. My issue is I have a drainage problem. The problem is VDOT has put a covert at the end of the street of a cul-de-sac and laid pipes to go straight out to the water. I have increasingly a large number of sinkholes due to the malfunction of that covert. That covert, and the thing about this is, and I gave you just an example of a page of where I had painted a rebar, and I call it a stick, but I painted the rebar in every twelve inches. So some of the holes are already a foot and a half deep. And then if I just gently push that rod in, I can go as far as some holes is three feet, but the average is about two and a half. That has been repaired more than ten years ago. So we don't have any records of that, but this issue lies between my property and next door's property, Ms. Catherine's property. And one of the main dangerous hole is really more in her property, but it's straight down the line of the covert. And you can see that I have pictures there, and it kind of explains. And you can see where it's a straight line from that covert. And then at the very end, it's clogged. It's full of mud. So it can't even, you know, it probably is not even draining out. But the thing that I feel that we should do, and Mr. Lockwood was gracious enough to come out and meet with us, and then he said he would get back with us in a week. It's been, it's been almost three weeks. So I don't know if you have done any research on this issue or whatnot, but it's just hard for me to believe that VDOT can put in something for the road, to maintain the road, stick a covert all the way down, and then say they're not responsible for that problem. And we have grandchildren, we have children that play around. I have to cut the grass, I have to do, you know, I have to walk in those areas. But I just don't want to make a mistake or have a child make a mistake and injure themselves on an issue that it may not look as bad as in those pictures as it is, you know, when you go out and look at it live. But I really need to get this problem fixed. I just moved into the house, so I'm inheriting this problem, but I'm not inheriting that it was something done by the builder or we damaged the land in that area. It's just a stray shot, and these sinkholes are because of the pipes that they connect there. You can see it's almost right at maybe each of the connections. I don't know how long that is. But I need some help, and I don't want to come, you know, a hundred percent out of my pocket to fix something that, you know, VDOT put in, because if I do it wrong, will VDOT come back and say, you know what, you didn't do this right. You messed up our part because you didn't do it right. VDOT, I feel that VDOT should be responsible to fix that covert. And Mr. Lockwood, I would like for you to help us and have our community in the colonies safe as well as the whole District Five safe. And this is an issue that is definitely unsafe for the residents and people that may come visit. And, you know, the thing about it is, I could go further, and because I have love for animals, and animals, we have deer that run back there, and if they hit that thing, they can injure themselves. So now that, you know, we can possibly damage them.
We have VDOT here in mind. Bring that up in just a minute.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Ms. Fears. I'm glad you're here this evening. I just want to reassure you that we are still working on this problem. Rodney Hathaway and I met last week discussing this situation, realizing that VDOT is not claiming responsibility for the repairs that need to be made. The county has no real responsibility in that as well. That's part of our research. We are talking to folks in the colonies about your homeowners association to see what can be done. It's going to take some time. It's going to take some effort, because right now, there is nobody claiming responsibility or ownership of that drainage. So we're working through that. It's going to, it's going to take some time. So I apologize that we can't come in there and roll through it and fix it tomorrow, but keep it as safe as you can in the meantime. It is not being, it has not been forgotten. We are working on trying to come up with a solution inside the colonies, because it's not just your covert, it's not just your drainage pipe that's having similar issues, and we're going to need to come up with an answer that fixes yours as well as others down the road.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate you coming this evening. We are working on it.
Is there any way, Mr. Lockwood, that we could get, maybe if possible, I can get some, you know, several large cones that I could put in those holes, you know, and/or some flags or something that maybe I can borrow? I don't think anybody will steal the cones, but I wouldn't, I don't want to go out and purchase the tall cones like I know you guys kind of have, you know, for your roads. And that would help people at least to turn, know exactly where those holes are before they walk up and it's too late.
Yes, sir. We'll talk about doing something like that for sure.
Okay.
I don't want to, I don't mean to cut you off, but our time is up.
I understand. Yes, sir.
I'll be in touch.
Thank you, Mr. Fears. Next on our agenda is the Residency Administrator's Report.
Hello, Mr. Hathaway, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Mark Harlow. I'll be giving the report this month for VDOT. Hopefully, you've had the opportunity to go over our maintenance report. Just a quick recap of what we've been working on. This past month, our maintenance crews continue to work on podo repairs, shoulder repairs, pipe replacements, ditch cleaning, tree removal, and pruning. We've also been doing litter pickup and sign repair. This past month, we did receive sixty-five work requests. We completed eighty-four. We had six emergency callouts after hours. The, we did have the Kentland Trail paving going on. That should finish up this week with traffic marking to follow soon after. They had a few, I wrote out there before the meeting just to look at it. They got a few tie-ins left to do, so I don't see a problem with them having that done, completed by this week. The speed study that was on the report, I looked at that. That has been completed. The speed limit has been changed, and that needs to come off for next month. The two forty-nine dip got repaired from last month. We also put up the curb advisory signs on two forty-nine. The stop bars that were requested have been sent to our traffic engineering people. They will be scheduled to be refreshed. It was a total of eight that needed to be refreshed along two forty-nine. Our primary mowing is to start next week, so you'll see the guys out picking up litter, starting to cut our primary routes. Soon after that, the secondary mow will begin. So that's all I have right now. If you guys have anything for me?
Start with Mr. Steers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have anything, but just wanted you to know that I've been monitoring the paving on Kentland Trail. And I know we got behind there a couple of days, but I mean, it was raining, so it's kind of hard to pour asphalt in the rain. But that's all I have. I appreciate you guys finally getting to that project. Thank you.
Mr. Evelyn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The brush cutting on six oh six and six oh nine looks really good. That was, that was well needed, so please let your guys know that we appreciate that, because that was getting
Overgrown.
Overgrown pretty bad, so. One other, I've had a few phone calls last week. White House Farms, it's probably got six or eight more homes towards the end of it. It's a lot more kids going out there, and people are concerned about the speed limit. And I was wondering if we could get a, it's forty-five through there. Maybe look at a speed study. Maybe lower it to thirty-five on Tallesville Road there.
I'll check with Mr. Frazier. We'll see when the last one was done.
I don't think, since I've been here, I've never requested one.
Okay. All right, yeah. Yep, I'll run it by you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Lockwood?
I don't have anything for this evening. I've been working with Jeff all good to get some issues resolved in District Five, so thank you.
All right.
Ms. Page?
Good evening. My first request, and thank you for all the repairs that have been done. On, at eighty-three twenty, Watkins Road, when it rains, it floods all the way across the road. It's done it before, and they did some ditches on the resident side. The rain, the water is coming behind the mailboxes. So those ditches need to be cut out. They did, when they did it before, then it stopped the water. But now, when it rains, and it doesn't have to be a pouring rain, that whole section right there flooded out.
Okay.
Okay, eighty-three twenty. The next one is eighty-one forty, where the church is.
Okay.
Where the church is, is a hill. And on that hill, we have two, there are two driveways. The front driveway, which traffic is heading, let's say, west. Can't see the cars turning out. And at the bottom of the hill, they have another driveway, so if it's heading east, they can't see that either. I don't know if we can put signs, slow doing service, or if you have any kind of signage, enter slow, slow entering, or?
Yeah, I'll have to look at our UTCD manual and see what we can come up with. I know that we don't put up the hidden driveway signs anymore.
Okay.
But, but we'll see.
Because Saturday I was there, and it was almost three accidents where the cars had waited, but they couldn't see the car coming down the hill. And the car coming down the hill couldn't see them because everything is on a crest.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yep, we'll see.
So I know you got some signs somewhere. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, and thank you for all that you do for this great county.
All right, thank you, guys.
Another last month, one more. Sorry.
Oh, you got Mr. Stella. I forgot that.
Hey, more people avoid me than you can imagine. A couple of things. I know last month I asked, and maybe that was one of the stop bars that you were talking about, was at the intersection of six forty Old Roxbury and Route sixty?
I'll have to check on that.
And I can't remember who was here last month, but he said usually the stop bar was about fourteen feet from the travel lane setback.
Yeah.
It might be eight feet at the very most there.
Okay.
And the stop bar is almost gone anyway.
Okay.
But my complaint was the double stack sign
Behind the rail?
On the westbound side that's on the shoulder. And if you pull up to the stop bar, those signs really are
Okay.
in the way.
So it's something that we could look at, maybe setting the bar back a little bit to look around that sign, or forward?
Or forward.
Yeah.
If you put it closer to the road, it would probably get knocked down. That's going to be the other problem.
Well, I was talking about moving the stop bar. If we move that stop bar.
Okay, yeah. If the stop bar was a little bit more forward, that might help, or either set it way back. So the other thing, I've got a request from the residents in the section of Five Lakes. Lakes, uh, it's the one closest to the hotel, um, you turn in on, I think it's Holly, not Hollywoods, Magnolia Woods Drive, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from the residents in there, and they've complained, and they're right, I've, I drove through there not long, a lot of those roads are just really starting to crumble up.
Yeah.
And they all, all through Five Lakes.
Yeah, we, we reviewed those, uh, Mr. Tiller, and we will look at getting those put on a schedule to be.
I'll, I'll give you this, and you can take it with you.
Okay.
And, and I know the best time to see it is about two days after it rains.
Right.
Because then you see all the little dark lines in the road, where moisture's still there, and still trying to seep up out of the road. Um, but, other than that, that's all I have.
Yeah, I just, I rode through there, Mr. Allgood and myself rode through and looked at those roads that we had some concern about, and you're right, they're, they're dilapidated, they're coming, starting to fail, so, we're, we're looking at putting them on a resurfacing schedule.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
That's it.
Anybody else, any second thoughts?
Let's go.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda, we have our public hearings, but we need to wait till seven to start them, so we'll skip on down to our elected officials' reports. Um, Mr. Steers, you have anything?
Uh, the only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is about a week or s- week and a half ago, Joe McLaughlin and Rick O'Pat, Rodney Hathaway and Matt Smolik, and I met with the new general manager of Colonial Downs, and he is part of Churchill Downs, and he's very energetic, he's enthusiastic about their plans, they plan to be here forever, and, you know, just throwing out some ideas of things that will be happening down the road, so, that's the only thing I wanted to report, but it, it was a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steers, Mr. Evelyn?
Uh, I would just like to touch base with what, uh, Ms. Bartlett said when we opened up this morning, I mean, this afternoon, uh, it was a great event, thank you all for organizing that prayer event last week, uh, it really brought the community together, uh, it was such a great service, and attended by, so, you know, like you said, doing the service, all the churches in New Kent came together, which was wonderful, for the most part, but, it was, oh, ten churches, I think, were out there, so, again, we're looking forward to, to that next year, and, uh, hopefully before that, so, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn, Mr. Lockwood?
I would just like to second Mr. Evelyn's comments, it was a very, very nice event, we couldn't ask for a prettier day to, to hold an event like that, so, thank you very much to everybody that was responsible for coordinating that and bringing the community together.
Uh, Ms. Page?
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to announce, and I'll be announcing it again and again, that on September twenty-third at Colonial Downs, um, the American Cancer Society's largest event, which is Relay for Life, it will be again this year, so for those that have been asking, um, it is the biggest fundraiser, um, for research against cancer, and unfortunately, everyone here knows someone who has or has had, or will have cancer that will have to battle, so we ask that, um, you keep those that do have, and, um, that are fighting the battle, that, um, you support them with your prayers, and, um, and with your actions, and we ask that, um, you support the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, and just like I said, it's at Colonial Downs, and it is September the twenty-third, so we want you to pass the word, we want you to have teams, we want you to come out and have a good time, and support our survivors, and support the families of those that did not survive. So, I thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak.
You're very welcome, thank you, Ms. Page. Um, next on, uh, staff reports, I'm sorry, I was getting ready to skip you, Mr. Hathaway.
I have no staff reports, I do have a, one item under o- other business, which could be done at later.
That's next, so, go ahead.
What's been passed out is a proposed compensation agreement, um, this is for the purchase of an easement, um, adjacent to the Station Four property that's currently under contract, uh, under construction. Uh, we need a small easement, and there's a map on the last page showing the location of the easement, from an adjacent property owner, in order to run power underground, uh, to serve the new fire station four that is under construction. And speaking with the, uh, property owner, the property owner has expressed compensation, uh, for that easement, um, and has expressed to me that three thousand, three hundred dollars, uh, would be sufficient. Um, this is a time-sensitive matter, uh, we have been working with the property owner for a couple of months on this, of course, we, we've asked for a donation of, of that easement, and it, uh, does not appear that they're, they're willing to do so. Um, so in order to move the construction forward and not delay the project, I'm asking that you approve the proposed compensation agreement.
So, there's no Dominion easement to that piece of property?
There's only an o- overhead easement right now, uh, but what's being requested is an underground easement.
So, who requested the underground easement, we, are we requesting that?
Well, Dominion needs the easement, and the Dominion agreement, the actual easement agreement that will be signed, initiated, will be between the landowner and Dominion, Dominion needs the easement. Um, but, as we know, Dominion does not pay for easements, uh, that has to be worked out by the county and the landowner.
Can't they just go over, overhead until they get to our property line?
No, um, this property is adjacent to, um, and it's, what they're doing is, they're feeding off of the closest pole to our property and taking it underground there. Um, and because of the space on our site, uh, we really don't have room, uh, to set another pole on our property and then take it underground. Um, it is a relatively tight area where we're working with, so we need to feed from the line on the adjacent property, uh, to be the source to take the line underground.
Yeah, I, Mr. Thayer, I don't see that we have any other options, do we?
Not really.
We don't. Um, I mean, the o- only other option, I mean, we could look at condemnation, but that's never a quick option, and it's not a favorite option for us, so we'd much rather work out an agreement with the property owner, uh, than seek condemnation. Uh, the motion would just be to adopt the proposed agreement, uh, the funding is already available, um, in the Fire Station Four Construction Fund, um, we just need to adopt the agreement.
And she's agreed to this, right?
She has.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lockwood?
There's no further discussion, I move that we adopt the agreement.
As presented.
As presented, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Ms. Page, uh, Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Is that all for the other business?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda are some appointments I know that need to be made, um, anybody have one delegated by district? I have one. Um, I move to appoint Bill Martin to the Airport Commission, um, term starting January first, twenty twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. None others, Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Uh, appointments not delegated by district, does anybody have those, any of those? Alrighty, moving along. Uh, we need to take a short recess, uh, we're gonna go into closed session at this point, and we'll come back and have the public hearings when, at seven o'clock. Mr. Evelyn, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move to go in closed session, session pursuant to Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-a-point-one of the Code of Virginia for consideration of a prospective candidate for the county attorney position, and I move to go in closed session pursuant to Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-a-point-three of the Code of Vir- of Virginia for discussion and consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the county involving a future site for the construction of a new fire station in the Bottoms Bridge area. And finally, I move to go in closed session pursuant to Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-a-point-two-nine of the Code of Virginia for discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure, expenditure of public funds where discussion and open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board for the construction of a new animal shelter.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn, Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. We will be back.[1327.33]
Have a motion to come back in the open session.
We also need, you want to vote on the motion to return to open session first and then I'll read the certification.
Motion to come back in open session?
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Mr. Hefty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We also need a certification by roll call vote that only the matters identified in the motion to convene in closed session and lawfully permitted to be discussed under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered. Ms. Watkins, would you please call the roll so the members may so certify?
Who should I list made the motion? Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Thank you all for your patience. First public hearing tonight, ordinance O-09-23, creating the Liberty Landing Plan Unit Development PUD, principal planner, Ms. Laduke, and applicants.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to give a brief overview of the application before I turn it over to Mr. Geiger. So Ken Murner from Bridgewater Crossing and Jeff Geiger from Herschler Fleischer have requested the rezoning from business in A1 to planned unit development of approximately 118 acres of land. The applicants are proposing to create a mixed-use development with approximately 60,000 square feet of commercial space along Route 60, 145 townhomes, and 145 single-family residential lots. There are also designated open space areas, recreation areas, proposed clubhouses with amenities, and walking trails. The subject properties are located to the south of Route 60 across from Five Lakes. The comprehensive plan designates these parcels as village. Liberty Landing is in keeping with the county's village vision of this area and is proposed to be comprised of a mixture of structures and uses. The application materials were reviewed by all county and state agencies, and their comments will be addressed during the site planning stages. The Planning Commission considered this application at their meeting on April 17th and voted six to four to forward a favorable recommendation to the board. Ordinance O-09-23 is before you for your consideration, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Geiger.
Thank you, Ms. Laduke. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hathaway. My name is Jeff Geiger, here on behalf of the applicant to discuss the proposed or requested planned unit development for the property that is generally, from a kind of easy way to describe it, just east of the veterinary office on 60 and across from Jolene's Winery. This slide here is a portion of your comprehensive plan. And we've circled the general area of the property with the black circle. And as you can see, the area here is designated for that village designation that's part of your comprehensive plan. And as you know, in developing the comprehensive plan, the community was engaged, an important part of the comprehensive plan is the preservation of the rural feel throughout New Kent County. How do we do that? We have to develop areas where we have certain commercial amenities, certain attainable housing options. Those are your village designations. And outside of those village areas, the county is preserved for its timber and agricultural land, thus enhancing the rural feel and maintaining the rural feel of the county. Now, within these village plans, within these village areas in your plan, the comprehensive plan describes what it should look like. It should be characterized by a mixture of structures and uses, including residential and commercial uses. They're typically compact in size and pedestrian-oriented. And these village areas have traditionally functioned as your social centers in the county. The plan also goes further to say that certain uses are appropriate for these areas. These include single-family detached and attached homes on the smaller lots to provide opportunities for that attainable housing option. What's not appropriate are big-box retail. You want to see smaller-scale retail stores in these areas. Services, and then also professional and general office. Now, some of you may know, this is not our first time before this board. We took this designation probably about 10-plus years ago, and we came to the board and we said, "Board Supervisors, we would like to do a development, in our view, of what a village development should be. Over 600 dwelling units and 100,000 square feet of commercial, including apartments." The board said no. We tried again. The board said no. So, we thought hard and listened to two messages, not just one, that that wasn't exactly what the board and what New Kent County wanted for this property. So as we started thinking about a new approach, we developed, we looked at, your strategic plan. What were the things that New Kent County, that your citizens said that they wanted to see as part of design principles for development in New Kent? As you know from your strategic plan, there's a section that talks about community design principles. You'd like to see where it's appropriate in these village areas, the concentration of development in dense, compact patterns, so that you can preserve that countryside. Restatement of what's in your comprehensive plan. Your goal is to manage public utilities and amenities, to mix commercial and residential, providing supporting amenities and facilities that foster social activities. Then also to create that authentic destination experience. The strategic plan also identified specific retail opportunities in New Kent. Retail uses that the citizens, that the county felt was important. These include general merchandise retailers, restaurants, hardware store, clothing and accessories. The strategic plan also went on to talk about what other types of needs are within the county. The need for more daycare options, the need for more medical office and neighborhood office, and also the need for more middle-market housing. What do I mean by middle-market? As you probably know, if you go on Realtor.com or Zillow today, a new construction home can be purchased in New Kent County for over $500,000. Resales are in the $400,000 range. We would like, using these design principles that you have embodied within your strategic plan, to offer for sale housing in the 300s, in the 300 range. Some of our townhouse options, which I will get to, could start below 300. In that way, we're using your design principles to achieve that middle-market housing goal. So we're coming back before you again, understanding it is the board's desire, after our prior attempts to control development, and not have that original amount of development that we had originally envisioned for this property. Would like to request a planned unit development zoning designation for the property that fosters a land plan that uses economical and efficient land use in a unified development. Open space on this property will consist of 62 acres or 53% of the planned unit development. This open space includes an historic preservation area, a resource preservation area, and our amenity areas. This slide here is the land plan on which the planned unit development is based. For orientation purposes, this is Route 60. Jolene's is across the street. The veterinary office is to the right side of the screen. We have our commercial area here in front. We're planning 60,000 square feet of commercial with a layout that's targeted towards those, the spaces that those retail opportunities and those office uses are looking for, and that daycare is looking for. We will have two entrances onto 60, one on the west side of the property, one on the east side. And then we will have a road that will link the residential in the back up to the commercial and out to Route 60. Single-family detached homes will be behind the commercial. And then the townhomes will be tucked in the back, at the backside of the property. You can see the areas in green are our resource protection areas. And then outlined here in orange is that historical area. We did do a study, we did find some artifacts from a Native American site, and so we're not disturbing that area. Within that commercial area that's fronting on 60, we knew it was important, you had adopted the, what was then called the Bottoms Bridge overlay, now the Commercial Corridor overlay, to articulate in your zoning ordinance how you wanted your commercial to look and be used. So we've adopted those standards for the commercial area. As I mentioned, we're planning 60,000 square feet of commercial. And the uses that will be permitted are the uses that are found in your business zoning district. In addition to those uses, we would also like to have the option for a winery, building supply and lumber store, but no outside storage, no lows, plant nursery or garden center, a distillery, shopping center, and a retail establishment. Now, as we were working with your staff, they came back to us and said, "That sounds good, but we don't want every commercial use in the B District in this important location." And so we also have a list of businesses that are not allowed to locate here. These are a lot of the auto-centric or agricultural uses, in addition to the cemetery type use. Within the residential area, we will have the mixture of the two different types of housing, both attached and detached, the maximum of 145 detached homes and a maximum of 145 townhomes. As was mentioned, we will have a variety of amenities throughout the community, including a clubhouse with a pool, a playground, a dog park, picnic area with a shelter, and then trails throughout, in addition to sidewalks throughout that will link and integrate the two residential and commercial uses. One of the items we wanted to touch on that we thought was important and was a concern that was raised at the Planning Commission is, you have seen planned unit development in New Kent before, where they've written their own ordinance. With this one, we wanted to take a different tact. We wanted to say, "Look, we want to follow what's in your zoning ordinance, but where we need to make some tweaks to it to adjust to the plan, that's what we're going to be using the PUD to do." So, a lot of the development will be controlled by your zoning ordinance, including lighting requirements, drainage, parking, landscaping, signage, and height. In addition, we have other community requirements that are built in. A more enhanced lighting requirement, architectural review committee that must be provided for both the commercial and the residential area. Open space must be maintained by the association. Within the commercial area, we will be putting the infrastructure in, but one of the elements that we were asked to retain is not to just go in and clearcut the trees. So when the commercial comes in, we will put the infrastructure, the roads, the water, the sewer. But as users are expressing interest and get plans approved, we would then take down the trees for that specific area. Have a 25-foot-wide perimeter buffer around, and then also a 10-foot-wide landscape area along the road paralleling 60 to provide a transition between the residential and the commercial. Also committed to provide a variety of road improvements, including right and left turn lanes at each of the entrances into the new community. Now, this project will not just show up tomorrow. Now, this project will not just show up tomorrow. We envision this being a full ten-year build-out for the project. And this slide here gives you an idea of what that timeline would be. We're in 2023. We're hoping with the board's pleasure to receive approval of the change in zoning. With that, we would then move into plan preparation. Starting in 2024 through 2025, we would get plan approval, and we would start that investment in the commercial area upfront, providing the water, the sewer, and the road access that's needed in order to have a viable commercial area. In 2025, we would then start our residential construction. Twenty twenty-five is when you would see the first homes coming out of the ground. Twenty twenty-five is when you would see the first businesses coming out of the ground. And then we would see construction of the residential and the commercial continuing through 2032. Another point of discussion that we thought we wanted to spend, we should spend a little time on here, that came out of the planning commission, was how did we identify or come up with the number of students to be generated from our project? And so I wanted to give a little bit more detail on how did we get the number. New Kent County, from the data published by the public school system, you yield thirty-nine students for every one hundred homes in the county. Your housing stock is single-family detached housing. You don't have attached housing, except in a few places in the county. So we went and looked at what are other people seeing in other similar jurisdictions, such as Isle of Wight and York County? And from their perspective, they're seeing twenty-five students for every one hundred attached home. That was the range that we worked with. And when we did our analysis, we used the every thirty-nine, for every a hundred detached home, we are projecting thirty-nine students. For every attached home, we didn't use the twenty-five. We provided a greater number of thirty-one, thirty-one students per every hundred. We felt that would give you a very conservative number to say, "These are the number of children that could come." We feel that that number is even more conservative than what we would have generated with the twenty-five per hundred from neighboring localities, because when we've spoken with the community, we've heard an interest in getting more low-maintenance living with first-floor living style that the townhouses provide. The community is looking for these, for their parents, parents who need to change their housing to more age-appropriate housing, and also housing that would be closer to the residents living in the Bottoms Bridge area. So we think we have given you a very good estimate in the maximum number of children. We think it'll actually be less. We are also making some financial contributions to the county. We have included a cash proffer. The cash proffer for single-family detached homes is eight thousand dollars per home. You may recall that the board accepted cash proffers with an amendment to the Farms of New Kent rezoning, and that was at seventy-five hundred per home, and so we have increased it to eight thousand per home. A townhome has about half the impact of a single-family detached home, and so we halved the cash proffer for the single family to arrive at the four thousand per townhome. These are unrestricted funds, and the total amount of cash proffers that will be paid to the county may be used at the board's pleasure. In addition, as you know, we also pay an availability fee, plus a connection fee for every home. That fee is paid to your utilities fund. That total fee is eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars per home. It's over five million dollars that will be paid into your utilities fund. I know the board has recently removed the ad valorem tax for the Bottoms Bridge area, but the bonds are still there, to be paid by the ratepayers within the county. With these funds coming in, the bonds will be paid off, and the debt service will no longer have to be paid by the ratepayers. We also included in your packet information on the fiscal impact that this project will have on the county. What you can see on this slide at the top is the total amount of tax revenue that would come in from this project alone, and the total cost generated over a ten-year build-out, that ten-year horizon on that timeline that I showed you. Over that ten-year build-out, you will be cash plus fourteen million dollars. Now, that fourteen million dollars, most of it is going into your utility fund. The five million dollars I mentioned on the prior slide has increased over that ten-year period to a total of nine million dollars. The general fund also sees positive cash flow of five-point-seven million dollars. After that, once we reach our stabilization period, we've built out, we finished, we're projecting that to be 2034, you will see a cash flow of one-point-two million dollars from the project. Now, I wanted to take a moment and point out something that I thought was interesting as I was looking at the data from your budget. This is the budget from last year. We didn't, you recently adopted the budget, so we haven't included that data. But from last year's budget, your cost of education of a child is three thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars per home. That's the money the county spends to educate. When we add in that, plus your general cost of government, the homes within Liberty Landing will run a surplus of three thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars per home every year after 2034. Now, I know we've had some hard conversations, some hard choices with the budget, but this is an example of how new revenues can be brought in to help pay for priorities. So with that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the rezoning of the property to the planned unit designation pursuant to the ordinance that's before you, subject to the cash proffers that are before you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Geiger or someone else from Boyd Homes?
Public hearing.
All right, well, we'll open the public hearing and have that, and then we can come back, because we may hear something else that we want to ask. At this time, I'll open public hearing ordinance oh, zero, oh-dash-zero-nine-dash-twenty-three, creating the Liberty Landing Plan Unit Development PUD oh-one-dash-twenty-two. Thank you, sir. I will call your name, ask you to come to the podiums, state your name and address for the record, and we'll have three minutes per person. First on the list is Shelley Wilson.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman and Board of Supervisors, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Shelley Wilson, and I reside at eighty-nine forty Rock Cedar Road, New Kent. I am also the Director of New Kent Christian Academy, located right here in New Kent County. I am here to support the Liberty Landing proposal, located on Route sixty and Bottoms Bridge. NKCA will be the anchor business for this development. The academy would provide the much-needed children's programs to working parents that our county desperately needs. We are a fast-growing community. I come before you this evening and ask you to vote in favor of the Liberty Landing development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Daniel Stewart.
Daniel Stewart, eighty-one thirty-nine Airport Road, Quentin. I oppose this, and I would like you to oppose it. Again, I stated earlier, now this is like six hundred additional vehicles on that road, and you're coming out of the Bloom's Line on sixty, and you want to turn west, or south, or, excuse me, east. At times, it is hard to get out. I mean, I sat there doing it, coming either direction. You, again, with the schools, yes, it's a ten-year thing, but county's growing, all these housing developments that aren't completely done yet. You got, he mentioned, the gentleman mentioned, a business area, but doesn't know what kind of businesses, that's a prime land for businesses that potentially could go there that would be better. I don't know, he doesn't know, but I don't know. We need to stay rural, but we need to get businesses in here to accommodate the people that are here, because I know not everyone wants all these housing developments to be developed, because infrastructure, I talked to people, infrastructure, schools, and other things that the county does not have right now to support everything, and then our dumps that we got going, you know, those things are overwhelmed. I know the one and six on Airport Road, that one is overwhelmed a lot with traffic and getting overloaded, so I just recommend, and I wish you would, to not approve it.
Thank you, my name is Paul Willard. I live at forty-one seventy-three Virginia Rail Drive. Thanks for the holding on the tax increase, I wanted to tell you that. New Kent County is growing, and that is a good thing, because the question is, how do we grow? Several things are moving to the county, and when we bring things in, they help us all, some things like one hundred twenty-five sign variances, and I'm afraid that that might be what will come start late, when we'll start building things out, that the next thing will be zoning variations. The board was presented with a request for mixed-use development in Liberty Landing. I had the opportunity to attend the planning session in which it was presented, as potential three hundred families being brought to New Kent into the Bottoms Bridge. On the surface, I think it's a good thing, but the issue that concerns me are the details. I found the presentation with the planning commission too focused on the benefits, but not so much on the details of possible consequences come from the development. We're advised that we should expect a hundred and three schoolchildren from three hundred potential families. Frankly, I question that data. It seems such a small number, and I've seen too many times when those numbers don't work out. We're advised that there are no commitments for any commercial businesses that we know of, but if we suggested, if we build it, they will come. One commissioner commented that it had been told in the past of business foretelling, but the commercial development was minimal at best, but it might be nice to have another gas station complex, if that's the quality we seek. The proposal offers the commercial development with a twenty-five-foot buffer. I thought to myself, that's not even a first down in a football game. I'm concerned that the proffers offered to the county will do little to accommodate the required services to support three hundred families and possible commercial development. Would the builder be willing to put up performance bonds to guarantee if that doesn't? What are we going to do, or what will we get? I've had the opportunity to live in many areas across the United States. I've seen good development, I've seen bad. I've seen abandoned, half-built homes that promised development to areas for a builder to just walk away. I've seen development in our area. Who does not love the traffic in Short Pump, or the possible interchange of mechanics fill with all the traffic and congestion? In a few years, I think we'll see Bottoms Bridge become that way, and I'm very concerned about that. Again, I welcome Liberty Landing, but not as currently proposed. Serious consideration needs to be given to what and when the product will be finished, what the actual impact, and importantly, the appearance and the access to the area. The only time we can get concessions is on the front end. I think we need to see a better presentation which offers a quality development with what the product is going to turn out to be. This kind of presents like a shiny thing, and on the surface, it sounds great, but right now, I would ask the board to deny the request, and say, "We need a little bit more thought on this, and a little more consideration about what's actually going to happen." It won't hurt the developer to come back, as he's indicated, we've come back before, but again, because the board had the wisdom to say, "It's not what we want." So I think, again, we might want to say, "Let's take a little time, and maybe come back and talk a little bit more about the details and what we really need to expect." Thank you.
This time, I will close the citizens' portion of the public hearing, and ask if any other board members have any questions or concerns for the developer or for Ms. LaDuke? Anybody? Mr. Evans? Mr. Lockwood?
I have a few questions, but I like that gentleman's last comment the most, because I received this binder two weeks ago. I was not on this board when you presented previously, so this is a new project for me to review, and this is a lot to review. So I don't feel like I'm prepared to make a decision. I've only started with a list of questions, so I'm not prepared to move forward on this tonight, and I would like more time for this to be considered, for me to come up with a list of questions. I'll be glad to submit them prior, or we can do this again at another time, but I'm not prepared to move forward with this project. There are a lot of questions, and a lot of detailed questions. Traffic, I don't really like the way the traffic study outcomes were, and I know those always seem to go imaginably so light on the actual traffic, and how can you project traffic impact if you don't know who your tenants are going to be in your commercial space? So I have a lot of questions. Utilities, yeah, the revenue looks great, but I'm also concerned about how much water we're going to be using and where that's going to come from, so we've got challenges that are revenue impacting as well, but, you know, we don't need to create a whole new issue for where we need to go moving forward with a project of this scale in that area without knowing the impacts it's going to have on a lot of different things, and I just feel like it's a lot to consume in a short period of time. So like I said, this is my first round with it, and we just skimmed the surface, so that's where I am.
All right, Mr. Lockwood, thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Evans?
Ms. Lockwood? I mean, Mr. Chairman, Geiger's seeing you again. I would have to concur with Mr. Lockwood. Less than two weeks, I know you had some public hearings out in Patriots Landing, but you just gave us this thing two weeks ago, and you did call after that, but there's no way we can do our due diligence on the project of this magnitude in less than two weeks. We wouldn't be doing the citizens any justice. I have numerous questions. I mean, I've been on planning commission and board for years. I've never seen a project come, anybody ask an advocate to come to this board to approve something within less than too much, two weeks, when they have the, when they just received this information. So I'm very frustrated with the process y'all, you know, have gone through. I don't, most PUDs are stricter than ordinances. That's me, I just, any PUD that the New Kent has approved so far, is, you just said, your PUD is in accordance with our ordinances, but most of the PUDs that we have approved have been stricter. So I mean, that's just one question that, of many, many questions I have on this project. So I would have to concur with Mr. Lockwood, there's no way we can vote on this project tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would just like to clarify a point of fact for Mr. Evans, for Mr. Lockwood, if you may. Don't disagree that you guys received it two weeks ago. I would like you to know, we've been working on it with your staff for over a year. All those materials have been with the county. As you demonstrated, Mr. Lockwood, to the point that the gentleman raised- As you demonstrated, Mr. Lockwood, to the point that the gentleman raised before I came back up. We've, your staff has required us to look at an infinite amount of detail that is provided for in that binder. Fiscal impact, traffic, utilities, environmental, and we've gone through multiple rounds of review with your staff.
Mr. Geiger, our staff does not vote on this project.
I just want to, it was, I wanted to clarify that it's, the applicant didn't just show up two weeks ago.
I, I understand that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, my first year on this board, I had the privilege of working with a PUD. It, it took far, it took longer than a year just to have meetings, to work out the details of it. And there's still details of this that I don't, that I have questions about. I have questions about the number of stories and the apartments. At one time, it was stated there will be apartments and then the
No apartments.
The, it showed that there will only be townhouses and homes. We talked about workforce housing. Workforce housing at three hundred thousand dollars is, for a three hundred thousand dollar house, is not workforce housing. Age-restricted housing, I didn't see that. And then when we talk about, in our PUD that I worked on, we talked about building, buil, building space for commercial, but not having a commercial to fill the space. So therefore, you had empty, um, empty store, storefront, but you had no tenants in your storefront. I mean, to be a good neighbor, the first thing that we said that would be in the commercial would be a winery. Well, we know that you're right across the street from a winery. I mean, is, to me, is that being a good neighbor? That's the first thing that came to my mind. Oh, my God, you know? And so, I'm just like the rest of the board. I just received this. I have a ton of questions about what I've already read, and I appreciate the hours and the time that the staff spent with you. But unfortunately, the staff is not the one that votes on this, whether or not this PUD goes through. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Geiger, thanks for being here this evening and your presentation. I was on the board before, and it was voted down. And I made some suggestions, and I think this time you've listened to some of it, but still not all of it. You know, we have neighborhoods going up all across this county. You're very well aware of that. There are hundreds of homes being built just in Brickshire alone. And you guys never really come to us and say, you know, what do you want that you would vote for? And one of the, my specifics that I talked to Mr. Werner about last time was instead of all those apartments, this county needs assisted living housing. And I can't believe you guys haven't even looked into that, you know? And, because I stressed it several times at the last presentation. And the only response I got was if we came in with assisted living, we'd have to bring in the state. Well, bring in the state. That's what we need. We need assisted living in this county. We don't have anything like that here. And we have an, an older generation of people that are retiring. A lot of my friends that have retired have moved out of the county. But, you know, and I agree, we, we just got this. There's no way any of us can make a decision on this. I tried reading it last night till midnight, and I had to get him to get a drink, I tell you. But, and, the thing about it is, you, you cannot, you know, I don't, doesn't even remind you of Mr., the Mr. Pillow guy.
Oh, jeez.
You look just like, anyway. But, you know, we, we've got to have time to go through this because this affects this county forever. And I, and some of the stuff I saw in there, the species of different birds and things there, all throughout that property, there are certain times of year that they breed, and there are certain times of year that they have babies and all this stuff, and it looked like it was year-round with all these birds, you know? And so, a lot of the birds would be, trees would be cut down and birds would be moved out of the area, just one of the animals. But, I appreciate your efforts and, but I, I personally, there's no way I could even vote on it. If I voted on it tonight, it would be a no, and then you'd really be mad. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Mr. Steers, if you, if your economic development team can bring us an assisted living project, we're happy to talk to them. The market works like the market works. It's a free market system. Businesses locate where the houses are, where the demand is, where they can get a loan to build, where a lender says that's going to be successful. You've heard this evening that you have a business that is interested, wants to be a part of our development. The market's talking. We have interest from restaurants. We have interest from the retail sector. I know what you're saying in terms of the assisted living, that they're not knocking on our door. But if you can bring them, we want, we aren't going to, we aren't going to turn anybody away. When we build houses, when we build communities, we deal with a lot of regulation. And we do it successfully, and we balance it all. So, whether it's the requirements of your local utility system, your planning staff, or the federal government in terms of bats and birds and all this stuff. It's, it's all manageable. It's all done. And that's the reason why we turn in these studies, so that you can see that we've looked at it, we understand what we're dealing with. And for example, I mentioned the historic area. One of the things that we recognized and we worked on was the preservation of that area. Those other items, they will be handled as, as the law requires, as we move through the development, just to let you know.
Well, based on my, for the fellow board members, is, Mr. Lockwood, since you started it all, are you, a timeframe that you would like to look at this? I mean, if we
Maybe take a look at it and then present a timeframe.
Okay, all right.
Have more discussions, get some questions answered. As far as sitting here tonight to tell you a month or two months, I'm not going to do that and not be truthful with you. Thank you.
Any other comments? Anybody have a? Ms. Evelyn?
Mr. Chairman, I move to defer ordinance oh-dash-zero-nine-dash-two-three and associated proffers conditions.
Need a timeline, Mr. Chairman? It's not indefinite deferral. You need a specific time to when you're deferring me to?
No, sir. I think you have up to a year for me, and you submitted your application for us to look at it.
For advertising purposes.
It's advertised. It's just been
You closed the public hearing? Not going to reopen it?
Mr. Chair, you have up to a year to make a decision. We have opened and closed the public hearing. The question is whether they vote on the approval.
Ten-four?
They do not have to vote tonight. They can come back later, as long as it's within a year, and they can vote on that. Yes, sir.
Understand.
All right, there's a motion there by Mr. Evelyn to defer. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Thank you all. Item two, public hearing, ordinance oh-dash-zero-seven-dash-two-three, proposed amendment to Article seven, food and beverage tax of the New Kent County Code. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before you, you have ordinance oh-dash-o-seven-dash-twenty-three, which is an ordinance amendment to our food and beverage tax, or also known as the meals tax. Back at our, in February, during our work session, our treasurer and commissioner of revenue came to you and presented the proposed amendments that you have before you. I'd like to state that what you have before you does not impact the food and beverage tax rate, or other known, also referred to as the meals tax rate. There is no rate change proposed. What this ordinance does, it amends the definition of res, a restaurant to comply with the definition listed in state code. And there's also changes to the provisions for assessing penalties on past due payments, also to conform with state code. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hathaway, or do we want to wait till after the public hearing? All right, in that case, I'll open the public hearing for ordinance oh-dash-zero-seven-dash-two-three, proposed amendment to Article seven, food and beverage tax of the New Kent County Code. Sign, the sign up sheet? This time, I'll close the public hearing because no one signed up. All right, now, any questions for Mr. Hathaway from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Hathaway, all you're asking us, all you're changing in here are definitions.
Well
That's what it appears to be.
Yes, we're changing the definition of a restaurant. There's going to change the state code, so we're matching that definition. We're also changing, though, the provisions for assessing penalties on past due payments to conform with the state code as, as well. And it's just a timing issue. Currently, our state code reads that we assess penalties thirty days past the due date. I'm sorry, currently, our county code reads that we assess penalties thirty days past the due date. What we're proposing is to match the state code that states it's the first day of the month after the bill was due, the month following the due date of, of the bill. So I believe that would go to fifteen days potentially. I think bills are, they're due the twentieth. So the following month on the first day, we would start assessing penalties, and that's in accordance with state code.
So it could be as early as nine days or as long as eleven? Right, okay. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Page.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt ordinance zero-dash-zero-seven-dash-twenty-three, amending Article, what is it? Seven of the New Kent County Code on title food and beverage tax.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Next, public hearing, ordinance oh-dash-zero-eight-dash-two-three, proposed amendment to Article eight, transient occupancy tax of the New Kent County Code. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Just like the previous ordinance that you just considered. We're also updating this section of our code as well to comply with recent changes to state code. And I'd like to start off again by stating that the proposed changes that you have before you does not impact the transient occupancy tax rate. That will remain the same. There are a number of definitions that have changed in the state code, and therefore, you'll see numerous definitions that, that are being proposed in the ordinance that you have before you. It includes a definition for accommodations intermediary and accommodations provider. The proposed ordinance also removes exemptions for miscellaneous charges and long-term stays, and it amends the method for collection, reporting, and remittance of the tax. The code also, the amendments, proposed amendments also amends the penalty for failure to report or pay taxes, and adds a class one misdemeanor for the willful failure to collect the tax, which is consistent with state code as, as well. And, and the major change with there is, this does involve a class one misdemeanor as well. Our current code does not, but it is being consistent with our state code for those who falsely report their earnings.
All right, so, would be the misdemeanor if they don't collect it? Or they, or the
If they, if they do not collect it from the guest or occupant that, that's visiting their facility, they have a legal responsibility to collect the transient occupancy tax from their patrons.
Is that?
And pay it to us, yes.
So, in the code, does that apply to the meals tax as well?
That, that applies to the meals tax as well. They have a legal responsibility to collect that from their patrons and pay that to the county, yes.
So if they don't pay the meals tax?
It's, it's a class one misdemeanor, but that was already in, in that section of, of the code.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? At this time, I'll open the public hearing for ordinance oh-dash-zero-eight-dash-two-three, and I will close this public hearing because no one signed up. Now, does anybody have any questions?
I have a motion, if I may, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt ordinance oh-dash-zero-eight-dash-two-three, amending Articles eight of the New Kent County Code titled transient occupancy tax.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. I believe we finished the rest of the agenda earlier, so. Meeting schedule, the next regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at six PM on June the eighth, twenty twenty-three. And the next work session will be held at nine AM on May the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, both here in the boardroom of the county administration building.
Motion for adjournment.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.